Go ahead, Kyle, we made you know where to line. Welcome everyone here to the line, I'm calling Reverend Thomas Kleszczik, lead us in prayer. If anyone please stand up.
Let's have our heads in the word of prayer. Lord, you said in Proverbs fourteen that righteousness exalt us a nation and sin is a reproach to any people. So God, we come tonight invoking your presence into this chamber. We ask you to bless our mayor, our city council, our police chief, his staff, our city clerk, our city attorney, and all our staff. Lord, we ask you to teach us that we are again a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Lord, we thank you for a new year, twenty twenty-five. And God, in this prayer, we pray for those who've gone on who did not make it into twenty twenty-five. We pray for our president who's gone on, James E. Carter. We pray for our present president, Joseph R. Biden. We pray oh God for our newly elected president who's coming in a few days, Donald Trump. God, we just pray, we pray for our mayor and our city council. We pray that we will have a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Lord, teach us that as long as we remain good, as a city, we will remain great. And God, lastly, as we close this prayer, we ask you to help us to do justice, to love and mercy, and to walk humbly with our fellow man. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Before we have the pledge of allegiance, I'd like us to have a moment. Besides, remember Kyle Fletcher, he just passed away, and also Bill Gray, so just pause for just a moment, please, before we have the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All comments, if anyone has any want to speak just to say to nicely, add to the record.
Richard Lynch, six thirteen White Oak Drive, Lowell, North Carolina. My presentation tonight is directed mainly at the board. And what I've done is I've come across some documents that prove beyond a shadow of a doubt why we need to hold on to our water waste treatment plant. Now, we've been going back and forth and I should say discussing, but I've been here at many meetings trying to persuade the board and everybody to get on board with the vote. So this is a report that was given just before the last town council meeting in which the motion to table the vote that night put the voting of keeping the waste treatment plant off for till the end of January. In this report, it shows that there's a ninety-five thousand dollar loss in the waste treatment plant. But there's a problem with this report. Because if you look here where it says total revenue for the sewer, which is your waste treatment plant, the number is six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The expenditures are seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But what wasn't done, or I should say what was done, is at the very top of this report, there's this number here. And I want to thank Councilman Bynum for giving me a tutorial on how grants work because that's what really caught my attention. You can't take grant money from one place and put it into another, from what I understand. So at the very top of this report, there's a grant, and it's called Waste Water Pre-Con Planting Grant. So that's in black and white, right there. So that means that's got to be applied to the wastewater plant, from what I understand. Somehow, mysteriously, that number gets transferred over to the water department and put into their revenue. On top of that, we have where this report was given, and by the way, this report was given out sometime around July, August of last year, when I attended my first meeting. And in this report, it shows that in the fiscal year budget, the actual budget for twenty twenty-three, and it says fiscal year budget twenty twenty-three was for three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. It says the actual was two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. This here report says the budget, all of a sudden, the budget changes, and the actual revenue for the sewer, six sixty-five four twelve, but what they don't do is they don't put in that grant money. And lo and behold, one of the biggest expenses that we incurred in the waste treatment plant was three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. If you take this number here, this three forty-three, and you drop it down into our revenues for the waste treatment plant, it gives you a total revenue of one million eight thousand dollars. You then subtract from that this seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar figure, which includes that money, and we have a profit of two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars still left over. Then I went back to twenty twenty-two, and in twenty twenty-two, we showed a profit of three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in the waste treatment plant. Now, I've asked Tyler, if he would, he's getting me some information on the expenditures for the waste treatment plant for twenty-one, twenty, and twenty, uh, twenty-two. So I can make a comparison there. But I am ninety-nine percent sure that in all those years, talking to the operator and talking to the engineer, they've always operated underneath budget. And the revenue has always been somewhere between five hundred to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They operate on a shoestring of about two hundred and seventy-five, on a high year, year they're at about three hundred, uh, uh, about three hundred thousand. So every year, they're turning a profit of anywhere between two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. My question is, why would anybody contemplate giving up a profit center, incurring the cost to feed that profit center at five million dollar loan, incurring the cost of upgrading the, uh, collection system that feeds that profit center, and then be at the mercy of the people who have that profit center to charge whatever they want to? Now, I've, you've heard me say this many times. If I'm wrong on my numbers, prove me wrong. I will stand here before you, I will apologize to the people of Lowell, I'll do whatever it takes. But from what I see from these reports that I've got here.
Karen Sarns, three oh seven Walker Drive, I give my minutes to Richard.
What was your last name?
Sarns.
Please go ahead.
S A R N S.
I'm not going to go into all this other data that I uncovered. The short and long of it is this, I'm here for one purpose only right now. To convince you that under no circumstances should we give up this waste treatment plant. We give it up, we're going to lose three hundred, four hundred thousand a year in revenue. We're going to then turn around and have to make that revenue up somewhere. We will have no money to work on our collection system. Two Rivers will have the ability to charge whatever they want to. And I have it on very good authority that the Two Rivers facility is going to need some major upgrade or rebuilding in the very near future. And every municipality that's signed on to them is going to be hit to help pay for that cost. Folks, we got a moneymaker there. We need to put the money back into it, bring it up to date, do whatever it takes, and let it generate even more money. Do you realize that if we turn the waste treatment plant over to Two Rivers, here's another thing that nobody's talking about. Every time we have a major storm, you're going to be paying for a million-plus gallons of sewer to go through that treatment plant because it's runoff that's going into the plant now. But if it goes through their plant, they're going to charge us back the sewage. There's a lot to take in here, I know, but pretty straightforward. And finally, I want to say to the citizens, Lord, I came across this on the website. This is basically a power outlet of how the city of Lowell works. And if you'll look there, it says the citizen is at the very top of that power chain. Underneath that, you have the mayor, the council, and the city council, and the, uh, city manager. I encourage the people of Lowell to start getting involved with what's going on in their town. If there's a question, if you want something done, don't just sit back and, and expect them to do it. They, they have to understand, they work for us. Somebody asked me, well, why don't you run for town council? And I told them, why would I want to give up my power? I'm more powerful than any of those guys. If we're united, if you citizens, if the citizens were to get together, let their voices and their concerns and their questions be heard, come to these meetings and not sit there and look at a sea of black faces looking back at you, but look at, at a sea and have a, a forum where we can ask questions and they answer, where there's an exchange of ideas. That's how we make the city right. Because right now, there are things happening in this city I don't agree with. And I'm not going to sit idly by and I'm hoping I can get more people encouraged. I mean, this is kind of shameful that we've only got, what, eight people here tonight? That's shameful. And yet, if they don't do something that they, that the citizens like, the first thing they're going to do is bitch, moan, and complain. But they never get off their butts to do anything. We've got to change that. We have got to learn how to exercise the power of the citizen. We are at the top of the food chain, folks. And I'm sure that all those members there, they know that. But, you know, somebody once asked me, why do the, why do people in Washington spend all that money? You know what the answer is? Because they can't. Because we do nothing about it. We sit back and we do nothing about it. It's the same thing here. Why don't these things get done in Lowell that we don't agree with? Because people aren't getting involved. So once again, I'm asking you, with all due respect, please. Now, we have a meeting coming up, January thirty-first, is it? Twelve o'clock?
Thirty-first or twenty-first?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first. Yes, encourage your neighbors and your friends, everybody, to be at that meeting so they can have some input because we're going to be discussing the wastewater treatment plant and rather not to keep it. And I, I'll tell you right now, I'm an open-minded person. You give me the evidence, you give me the financials that shows that we're losing money and we should get rid of it, then we'll talk. But right now, that's not the case. And one more final statement. Everybody talks about bringing in consultants, engineers, experts from outside. But nobody wants to sit down with the operator and the engineer and pick their brain. What do we need to do? What's it going to cost? How long will it take? What will be the result? How long will the plant expand, extend its life if we do such, such, and such? I have done that. And for about three million dollars, and it could be between three to five, and I've asked Tyler to look in to see if we can get that five million dollar low interest loan. If we could get that money, we could bring that plant into compliance, well, within compliance, we could modernize it, upgrade it, and keep it for another twenty to twenty-five years. And let's face it, folks, with modern technology and another twenty to twenty-five years, you will be paying for crap because they're going to learn how to turn it into cash. So think about that. Thank you, I appreciate you giving me the time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Candy Thunderbird, six hundred Robinson Boulevard. In the last meeting, or two meetings ago, someone spoke about the one-way sign at the restaurant. Um, when I was on council, and I think Mr. Chipwood was on council at that time, we looked at that because it was not made, that decision was not made for parking, as the mayor had said. It was made for safety. You come, uh, west going towards the restaurant, you pull out, you cannot see. And if there's cars, which that's their parking, you cannot see. So we decided to have it changed or looked at, and it was looked at legally. And it was made a one-way street, just that one block, uh, because of safety. Was not because of anybody's parking. They had their own parking, which they're legally, you know, they had to have that. But it wasn't, the decision was not made for parking, it was made for safety reasons. And also, um, let's see. Um, and then, excuse me, in the November meeting, mayor, you wrote, you wore your Trump hat and you had your friend play the song. And that was all good, you were happy and upbeat and everything, I, I get that. But that was kind of offensive to some people, my, some of my friends and citizens. Even though we don't agree on a lot of the politics, national politics, it's still offensive to them. And also, we are bipartisan here. It's not Republican and Democrat, and I just thought that was, was not called for. And I think you really know, need to apologize to some of the citizens that were offended about that. And also, at the tree lighting, you were handing out money to children. Now, I, I know you've got a good heart, and you were telling all the kids, you, you, I think you said, people won't agree with what I'm doing, but I'm going to do it anyway, because that's what you do. You do what you want to do when you want to do it. But you were handing out twenty-dollar bills, and that was fine in one sense, but you are the mayor, you represent Lowell, and it's the appearance of. That didn't look very just like it. Thank you.
You've been a little younger, you got twenty bucks. But anyway, what we need to do is stop, you know, trying to kick, you know, kick the poor mayor. I'm a Republican, I'm proudly Republican, it's my right to represent, and you're right to do whatever you are, anyone. If I want to wear a Trump hat, I'll wear a Trump hat. If you want to wear whatever you wear, fine, but I'm not going to call it up for wearing a Trump hat for what? I love Donald Trump, I love our country, it's going to get better.
But we're bipartisan in Lowell, that's my statement.
I'm going to be where I am, thank you, that's. All right, the, uh, adoption of the, or the, this agenda, this meeting.
I would like to adopt this amendment for the January fourteen twenty twenty.
Second. And discussion. I'll, thank you. I would need to approve the amendment twelve ten, two thousand twenty-four. Unless you have changes.
I have changes.
I would be appalled if you approve it because I was about to.
Was this?
You still have a quorum, just as for the meeting, you can still vote if.
If you have to vote, have a quorum, right? This is a vote, to approve the amendments. There should be a quorum, three, at least three, according to what our rules are. Have a quorum, three, the council member one may.
Correct, have a quorum. Vote is by majority of the members that are present, so if we, any motions would be, have to be passed by a two-to-one majority. If you have a two, two-to-zero vote, that is sufficient to pass.
I made a motion for the, I'm second. Any discussion? I'll, I'll vote. I'm set, I said nothing, and that's all right, you do whatever you want to. Uh, number three, special presentation, what is this, Kyle?
There's no, there's nothing on that.
Number four, consent agenda, make a motion.
To approve the consent agenda?
I'm second.
Say it.
In this session. I'll, thank you. No unfinished business, right?
That's correct.
Number six, new business, uh, interim, uh, city manager contract.
So I ask that, um, as you know, that I have, um, decided not to take on a full-time job for the, um, city manager position. However, I'm asking if this council approved the extension of the interim contract, um, to run till March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Doesn't that like it's written, I was written?
Yes.
Have a motion.
Curious why, just until March.
Well, I think, so for right now.
We have to come back in March.
So right now, um, I plan to, I've been reviewing the previous, um, resumes that have been submitted. I plan to submit some to y'all that I believe that would be a good fit for Lowell. If you choose to interview those individuals, um, I can set some time up to have them come in. But I'm willing to help you all in that transition. And then again, if it, if it needs to be extended past March, you know, I'm willing to help as well.
So we need a motion extended contract, everybody.
I make a motion to extend the interim city manager contract.
I have a second.
Sir.
Okay, under discussion, and you just brought the subject, so you're going to look at the resumes and things like that. I think the council needs to set appropriate time to look at the resumes along with you. So that way, we can make a decision on who the city manager, mayor, or maybe you may not be. So once we come to the time to.
I can send out those to y'all.
And, and also, it's been put out that, you know, the contract, I mean, if you're taking the job and, and the people that have put in the resumes have been notified that the job has been filled, and we, uh, reached out, reached back out to the people that put the resumes in, letting them know that it's available.
Like you just said, you wanted to review them before we call them.
We want to review them, but we want to also include those people that are already acquired.
That's what we're doing.
And have a meeting to sit down and talk with the folks themselves, the council with a lot of you. So we need to set a time, I guess, I have some time in February to start looking at resumes. So, how many resumes do you have on hand, by the way?
Probably have roughly ten.
Mr. Mayor, I may make a suggestion, please. Uh, we have many, many resumes that did not even come close to fitting what we need to do. I think our current interim has some great insights on what we should acquire on, uh, the income. Uh, I think that all of these be evaluated and then make sure that we are accepting a few candidates that fall into the scope of what we need to be done. Uh, rather than spend a lot of time looking at people that are just only wearing their hat. Uh, we don't need to waste our time on that. Although we appreciate the interest, uh, we've got a job to deal with, we need to pick right first. So, that said, opening up, uh, all of the, uh, resumes that we had in front of us, uh, ninety-five percent of which would not meet qualifications at a minimum to begin with before, uh, our current interim's interjection, I think is a wish to have.
I think you already proven that you, uh, when I offered a position to someone without even interviewing other people, just, you know, William, just go ahead and extend the offer to act as city manager, it is. We didn't even look at one, we didn't look at no, we didn't look at no resumes of the group, of the people. We always looked at, and I was mayor before, and something came up, and I, especially, position city manager, everyone, the whole entire council should look at it.
Everyone's resume was emailed to our city.
You got a copy of his resume, and I believe you're the one who was pushing for the current. So, that aside, moving forward. No point fingers, no, you think, yes, wishes, do the right thing, moving forward.
As far as what you're saying is correct, we need to look at all the, ask, we need to look at them together. We don't need to, for your mind, it's one vote, that's your vote. I have a opinion, that's mine, but I have those three votes in my head, I don't have two. But we have people on this council, once we have a full council, you know, where they can make a decision. But everyone needs to be, there should be an open discussion, you know, people that are fired for this job. And it's been shoved to the side, no, no one's probably interviewed, that's the truth. We should have had interviews along with you and the whole third of five. That would have made it better, it would have been better for all of us. But we still have those resumes, and I'm willing to look at them because they take the time to apply for the job. And you go out and ask where other people are coming, how are they going to feel if I haven't even interviewed enough one candidate? That's my question.
Either way, that comes in later, babe, we're just looking to extend the contract.
I understand, but we need to, we need to try to find someone to take this job. I mean, I have a motion and a second to extend the contract, any more discussion?
Is there a date on the motion, Tyler, or any recommended stuff?
Mark it, mark it.
March twenty, twenty twenty-five.
It's going to be extended through March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five?
And, and I, and I, and I feel like there's several people on this capable of being city manager qualified. But anyway, you go to the, the meeting, he's sent in March twenty-eighth, in the meantime, we need to try to find a city manager. Any more discussion? I'll, thank you. Out of the next five minutes, consideration of budget amendment number four, please.
If Lisa will handle this.
Thank you, Tyler, mayor, council. Uh, this is the, um, budget amendment number four, it's to receive grant funds on the SRP, ARPO three oh one, the pre-construction wastewater planting grant. Um, with this revenue is billing as they go to the state, um, so that's why some of these are coming in later. Um, so we've received forty-five thousand seventy-two dollars that we need, um, to approve on this budget amendment.
We're still paying with the grant now?
Yes.
For what?
For the planting grant. It has not been closed out yet.
I thought that's probably later on last meeting, I don't close it out.
That was, that was a CDPGI.
We're still spending money, but, we're going to get forty-five thousand, how much are we paying for the, uh, for the, with the grant now, what are we paying?
This is, this is the grant that they're under right now.
We're paying in forty-five thousand, you give us a check of forty-five thousand, we're paying this out, out of taxpayer money.
Make a motion to approve, uh, budget amendment number four.
Sir.
Under discussion, where's the money coming from? Are we paying for, or does it come in out of grant?
Grant money.
Any more discussion? I'll, thank you. All right, the next amendment to the interlocal Lowell Elementary Water Line.
Thank you, Max. This is, I have, I've attached, um, in your package, you have the original, um, interlocal agreement from the previous, uh, approval. The county has come back and added section eight point one and eight point two, uh, to the interlocal agreement. That's on the front page. Do you have any questions? I'll be glad to answer those.
The water line's in, but we don't have a meter button, so then it's on our water line.
That's correct.
We're still using the old water, it's like it was coming from the camel, they have all the water pressure they need, the water is fine. But they want to come in here and fill this eight-inch water line. And all this money the county spent.
Yeah, but Lowell, yeah, Lowell has not spent any money on this, nor.
We still get, we still get paid by elementary school every month, correct?
No, they didn't, no, we did not.
What was the sewer going?
We get the sewer, we do not get.
That's money that we get.
We do not get, yet this is a water line, for, for clean water pressure.
Or whatever, money has to come from somewhere, we can't keep providing stuff that we don't feel the money for.
We will be collecting, we'll be, we will be collecting, once this is up and online, we will be collecting the water, the.
One of the, one of the water meters been installed.
But it hasn't came in yet.
Why do you need a vote, or is?
Yes.
Now, this would have been our responsibility anyway, correct?
Correct, yes.
They just.
So, yes, so once, yes, so once everything's complete, the county will turn it over to us, and then we'll collect all the funds associated with the water.
Yeah, in the beginning, I mean, the county just paid for the destruction.
Yeah, I think they were taking care of that.
Just handed over to the city.
Yeah, and so them being responsible, county being responsible.
Yeah, but, but in the, but in the agreement, you know, it talks about all of the, um, the warranties that would come with it. And if anything were to happen, the contractors would come back out, makes that.
By the way, they talked about money quit, good, pretty good job, excellent.
So they'll, they'll do all their tests, and coming up this week, possibly in the next week, and then the meter should be in.
And whatever water we sell, we'll be charging for sewer. Before we had, had to go, they're going to have to charge the sewer when you didn't have any clean water. How do you come up with the amount for sewer? And that's on the outside of Lowell, and I, they'll be paying twice as much for water and sewer because on the outside. But we have agreements, it's like they pay the same thing as all those that's in town.
So it should, so I'll have to go back and check that information for you, but if they're on that, if they're, uh, not in the Lowell sewers, it should be put outside.
Plus, they tap into our water line, that's how they get the water where they are.
And, and to, and to make note, if this were to, uh, if the school were to shut down, this water line would be deactivated. They would, they wouldn't be used for anything else. That, that's in the agreement. I'm just saying, if that was the case.
Anyway.
We, we do need to make.
Your rights and stuff together, you need to know what you're going, you need to have an agreement with the council. Rather than just going off the hip and saying that's the way it's going to be. And, you know, we, county has one deal, we have another, we have to, we have to leave it popping out, out of the.
This has been going on for a long time, man.
It's kind of. We've been getting, we're getting paid every month. That's all, we get paid on tax and having, even though one of us is popping up.
Make a motion to approve any interim statute, one four three dash eight zero five.
Sir.
Any discussion?
See, this is, that's the next thing, right?
I'm sorry. Amendment to interlocal Lowell Elementary Water.
I'll second. Any discussion, I'll, thank you. The nation's approved, okay, I'm going to pass the one to be created by policy for, for hidden pornography on government networks and that. The next one is approved North Carolina statute one three created by policy prohibiting pornography on government networks and devices.
Give me one second. So earlier, in twenty twenty four, the General Assembly required that all municipal houses adopt an updated policy prohibiting and dealing in pornography on government networks and devices. The city of Lowell currently has a policy in place, but we needed to update it in order to reflect what the General Assembly is requiring. So this is what this policy is.
Yeah, and as written, and the amendments written, I can make a motion to approve it.
Yes, because it would go into effect January first, twenty twenty five, if we have that approval.
Make a motion, we approve North Carolina general statute one forty-three dash eight oh five.
Sir. Sir. Any discussion? Paul and Parker? Next item is L C C appointment.
No. Sixty?
I'm sorry, I need new time. To discuss city council results from North Carolina, leaving this five twenty-five twenty-six. I am, that's the way to go, that's gonna be later on this month, isn't it?
Yes.
You have it in January, May or later on?
That's, no, I need, I need the, we need to vote on the, the goals that y'all provided to Cheryl. We need to make a motion to approve those, and then I will enter those in, that retro.
Yeah. I got the tablets for everybody to vote it, well, everybody voted, Secretary Mayor, and then, um, I was, so I got that, and I was gonna let you all know what the top ten were, and if you vote to approve or not. The top ten was number one, to expand funding opportunities for disaster resilience, resiliency on concrete efforts. The next one was number two, establish long-term funding streams that adequately address water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, and other infrastructure needs. The top one was number three, expand state transportation funding streams for construction maintenance of municipal and state-owned secondary roads. The next one was number five, expand incentives and funding for local economic development. Next one was eight, create incentives that encourage and adequately fund regionalized water and sewer solutions. The next one was, non-reduced regulatory conflicts between state agencies that discourage voluntary consolidation, merger, and interconnection of municipal utility systems. The next one was provide local revenue options beyond the property tax. The next was support technical assistance programs to assist municipalities with securing or maintaining grants or other necessary municipal, necessary municipal resources. And next is address the needs of a changing municipal workforce through state assistance that supports employee retention and including training and recruitment. And the last one was protect the ability of municipal elected officials acting on behalf of local voters to determine election formats, formats, districts, and other election matters currently under their purview. And because I got the tablet, I couldn't get it in the agenda, so I can use all the top of it.
It's just everybody's vote, yeah.
Yeah, it's just everybody's vote, and whichever one, like of all five of you voted for the same thing, then that got higher, so, um, and that's just how, it's just how the, just everyone's had the most votes.
Do you have a response from all the council? You got a response from all the council?
Yes.
Very good.
That's under fire in the action, though.
You just have to vote to approve the nine that were suggested.
Recommendation, your recommendation?
Yes.
The motion to approve, or recommendations, which is what you want to do.
Make a motion to approve the results for recommendations for the goals.
Sir. Any discussion? Paul and Parker? Yeah, I'm thinking. Our next thing is the L C C appointment.
We have had, we have two applicants to fill a vacant position on the L C C, which is the Lowell Community Committee. This committee plays a role in community beautification, parks and wrecks, and helps out with other events. I'm not sure if the two applicants are here today, and if they are, would they please, if they want to take the podium and just introduce yourself and kind of why you would like to be on this board?
Oh, no, I am, I think, I'm Lyle Sturgis.
You have to go up to.
Have to get up here, okay. I don't do these very often. I'm Lyle Sturgis, I've lived here in Lowell for over seventy-two years. I love this town, this city, whatever you label it. This is something that's very passionate to me, and I'm very proud to be from here. Want to try to help any way I can, I work about sixty, seventy hours a week, and I won't say I'll be the very best one you ever have, but I'll be the one with the most heart that wants to help improve and keep our town, or our city, going like it goes. That's just the way I feel. I wouldn't have it any other way, I think we're the best doggone city in this county, or none, and I'm just proud to be a part of it anyway. I was asked if I'd be on this, I certainly would appreciate it, so that's all I want to say at this level here, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Do you have any other applicants as well?
We have, we have one other applicant, and I don't know if they're here, it doesn't appear that they're here, Ms. Kathy Bulington is the other applicant.
Maybe get approved, welcome, welcome, fine people. I like to run in the cars as hard, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, I get more vacation than you do, right?
That's right.
But thank you, thank you for, we just need a motion to approve these votes.
Make a motion to approve.
We just need, yeah, we will need a motion to approve one of the two applicants, and if anybody has any other questions.
This people's already advised, well, haven't they?
That's correct, we're only, we're the only one vacancy right now. So it's, yeah, so it's between Mr. Sturgis.
I'll put Mr. Sturgis on it.
I do? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if we table this, I talked with the city manager, I believe the last time we were making an appointment for the L C C committee, I had asked that a background check be provided along with the application, so we could look at it before we appointed somebody. So I would like to table this till we get a background check on both of the applicants to the next meeting. I mean, a background check is required anyway, but I would like to see that upfront before we appoint them.
Do you have a copy of background checks?
You can check me out if you want.
Well, and I'm, I don't, I don't expect anything on the background check, but if we're gonna go by a policy.
Yeah, you gotta do it the right way.
We need to be upfront, do it, you know.
That's cool.
Can you take your picture down at the post office?
Yes, God's gonna have to take the old picture, police department, but other than that.
Take my picture down from the post office.
Can you not make a motion, contingent upon the background check, checking out good? How you else gonna check it out good? Still will be, you still be getting what you need, and he's here tonight, there's no use. If he takes out the background check, if I was.
So, so you're asking for approval, uh, contingent upon, so you go in and prove Lyle. And with.
Anything happens, you're gonna be allowed to resign, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, man, you find something bad on me, I won't be. I still live here, love the town, but I just won't be.
If anything happens, you know, that's fine. Make a motion, go ahead and prove Lyle, and if anything kind of left, then you'll resign, how about?
Yeah, I know, I'm still waiting. The last time we done this, I made the suggestion that we get the group, the background checks to be presented in our packets. I believe I remember that. And, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm not gonna vote yes to approve somebody without having the background check in front of me to look at it first. I get what you're saying, Mayor, about the contingent, but if that's case, you know.
Yes.
Well, I mean, we, we don't hire people, they don't hire people to police form contingent on the background check. They don't hire them to run background checks, they run the background checks first, to make sure that they're.
He's not a volunteer, I understand what you're saying, I respect what you're saying, but he's here, and he's made a good commitment to the town, I'm sure he's.
And I'm, I'm sure they're, it's procedure and policy. Something against Mr. Block, that's the procedure and policy that I'm looking at.
Anyway.
Sorry, so we'll just, we'll take.
Ask him to motion.
I don't know, I'm saying, but no, no, I'm gonna have to take my second off, before I have to take it off. Stand the motion, I want you to. Should make the motion.
I did, I made the motion.
You were sending a motion?
I was sending my motion.
And he does, there's no other. Thank you, Lyle, and you will be approved, thank you.
Okay, I'll, you'll kick me out. I respect that.
Thank you, Lyle, thank you for being here, thank you for speaking, Lyle. Now we're gonna go into the, uh. I'll take him out and further the next one. All right, the next item is the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify a couple things from the last meeting that were, that were raised. One, I just want to clarify the, the question about the payroll issue, there was no payroll issue since it was out there. What was needed was reports to send to get, to make sure that the audit was correct, there was not an internal payroll issue. It was basically getting the documentation to the auditor.
Let me clarify this for you, this is the problem, what we did of our budget, we went up and talked to Sheila about them, so, and there is a problem, we still have a problem, like the fictitious thing you sent up there about the sewer, she had a copy of that as well. They don't audit, per se audit, all they do is take your figures up there and then put them in line, and that's the way it works. We have a dire need for a lot of things here, we have a dire need for financial reports, we have a dire need for whoever's taking care of this money, because we need to know where every dime is, the ten million dollars in the bank that we do have, because we had to work hard to get all this stuff. Fastier, now you're first to rise, and people need to know where the money is, all the time, usually to the city manager, as long as you're acting city manager, whatever. We need to know what monies are available at all times, payroll should be on time, there should be no excuse for our audit to be not completed by now. It's supposed to be done in October, and you tell me what the reasons were if it's not those reasons, what are the reasons why we not have our audit? I talk to the way.
I get several of this.
What?
We have four employees.
Now, that's wrong, that's a bad excuse too, they, they got plenty, listen, what we, what we have to do, we have, we have people, yes, sir.
They don't put their paperwork in.
We have, we have no, they're talking about the cities, but anyone, any, listen, anything on a computer can be done instantly. All the figures of the employees, the totals in the bank should be read all the time, day, day by day, not once a month. We should know where we are every day and how we stand on everything. I'm not supposed to complain about anything, telling the fact that law requires us to have that done by October, and this is January, and we still don't have it done. So why, why do we not have it done, and why in the years past has it been the same way, this is what's wrong with this whole city. You have rules, you want to go by rules on the background check, but you don't want to go by rules on your audit, annual audit is due in October, am I correct? And it's not, no.
And you knew, we had, I had told you all that it was gonna be late.
Yeah, I came up here and signed it, I didn't extend it, because you asked me to, I wasn't proven, I had to sign it.
Well, then we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have done it.
We are in terrible financial shape with what's going on here, because we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, the audit's due in October, it's not due in January, it's not due in February, it's a simple process, it's every twelve months. Every month you get a report, you put it down, and you add it up, and you submit it to the audit, that's how it works. How you want to operate, and how you want to do in the future, you won't, you won't have a part of that in March, but this council's still here for another, some of them for another nine months or so, some of them for three more years, but we have to answer to the public every dime we have, that's why I am a stickler for the money. You know, I know every figure we got, correct? Per se, every, no, we don't touch it, we've got to continue to go in that direction. And people need to be paid, payroll needs to be on time, which it is, you talk about these insurance problems, stuff like that, that shouldn't hold it up.
I'm not saying that's holding up.
I'm just saying nothing should hold it up, nothing should hold it up, all of the municipalities, they have their own time. We have a finance audit, we have a payroll clerk, we have water people, we have you, we have the recreation, what's, what's the problem?
We have four admins in this bill to do the audit that it took ten to do in the past.
High by October. October money is gone.
It got done, didn't it, and then you're sitting here fussing about.
I'm not fussing about, I'm fussing because the audit's not done. I tell you, the audit's not done, you can take the silverware, it goes. The audit should be done in October.
What would you go up here and do?
Listen, I'm the mayor, I don't, I don't know why I have to come up here and do this.
And I see what you're saying, Travis, about how many employees in the past, but a few years back, we got some amount that we got now, and all it's got done. It was always late. It's never been, I think it's been on time, on time, not this way.
It's been, it's been late, we got.
I mean, I, I don't know, I've never been on the council.
It was never late, but either, when he pulled that in.
It's never been late, it's never.
Never been late.
There's a lot of grants, there's a lot of other things.
There's a whole lot more stuff going on.
Larry, you can cancel it. And you understand this, we have enough employees up here to take care of what we do, I don't, I don't understand, why do we need backup, or backup for backup, whenever, everything's on, it's on a computer. There's a computer, everything, you get a report to make every month, you write down, you cancel out the checks, it's in, paid out, you submit that, and cancel it out, and move forward. It's a simple process, and I don't think our lifestyle needs to be running that department. All we need to do is do what we require to do, that's all.
Okay. This is manager's report, let's let it finish.
I'm just letting them know is, is audit's not done, put that in there with your background check, go ahead.
Listen, Larry, there's no need to be making these smart comments.
Not smart.
Yes, it is.
It might.
You're, you're gonna stop this stuff.
We need to have our audit. That's important.
You're not gonna be sitting here being smart with me, or these other council members, about put that in there with your background check, that's gonna stop, understand? Well, then maybe you, then maybe you need to excuse yourself as mayor.
I have to stay here around this place.
You're not doing a good job of it. Christ, this place. Tyler, you.
He's quite a boarder.
In your place.
Yeah, and, and another clarification was that Mr. Robinson had about the dashboard report, I had spoken with him about that, cleared everything up. The report was actually accurate, based on what had been entered, just wanted to make that clarification. The next thing was just want to remind everybody about the budget retreat on Friday, the third, first, at twelve, followed by the special meeting for the wastewater treatment.
Can I ask some clarification about that meeting, or any meeting you have in mind? If a council member or mayor, for example, knowingly comes in the meeting and says, I may need to excuse myself, you know, at this time, or what have you, I want to make sure that if, what is the process, John, on how you do that, and rather than just leave the meeting, if it's, if it's preemptive and approved, if council approves that, then it's not a yes vote, if you have to be excused early, this approved, so there is.
Right, so if you, if you make, if you need to leave, and you ask to be excused, then the council votes to excuse the person, then the vacancy, if you will, is not counted as a yes vote.
Okay.
If you were to leave without asking for permission, and the council doesn't approve it, then the vacancy is counted as a yes vote.
Okay, very good, thank you.
That's all I have.
The next item, I guess, please, uh, do you have anything?
You skipped city attorney, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything tonight, anything to say.
Do you have anything? Well, do you have anything?
Do. Speak a little bit positively at this meeting. The Lowell Community Committee, I've had several people, members, give me some, some stuff to let the, you know, citizens know what they have done. There's roughly two thirty-four, five, six, seven, eight, members coming up. They relaunched the Lowell Fact Aid Grant this year, or last year, excuse me, worth seven thousand dollars in matching grants with the council's approval. M E M Investments, Fairfoil, Beauty Salon, Back of the Moon, and York Properties all got those grants. They did the Christmas banners, last year, down number seven, that was a new thing. They lighted poles. Went Christmas tree design, snowflake, a snowman with coal printed at the bottom, they do seasonal stuff yearly. The city hall improvements, that was all done by the L C C, which the mayor kind of looked down upon, however, after some personal looking into with other. Um, which the mayor kind of looked down upon, however, um, after some personal looking into it with other council members. Thank you, it was approved for block fifty degrees, and everything was done the way it should have been. Other events they have done, the senior lunches, which I believe is monthly with Andrea, Halloween tree walk. They volunteered with Andrea, fall festival, Easter egg hunt, barbecue cook-off. Um, that was my first committee ever to serve this city, and it was an amazing time. There's still a couple on there that I served with, and, uh, I think them along with any committee deserves, you know, a good recognition. Uh, for the volunteers, that they spend a lot of time doing stuff in this city that sometimes isn't seen and, and even heard, but we thank you.
I think I should give him a hand, because I did do a good job on that. I agree, anything else? I'm not wanna, I wanna take care of things, that's necessary. Number one, all these deeds you did for us, uh, Mr. Russell, did you do, uh, on the properties? Did, when you investigated property, did they have any, any liens, or just like on the chemical plant, all the, all the money, all the, uh, money's supposed to be coming in for the chemicals? I mean, all the supposed to be going in that, all bankruptcy money and things, but we never ever saw anything on the chemical plant we did. You checked all these deeds, when you did the, uh, background on the property and things like that, did it any liens and accomplices, and things that you could suggest?
The, the money coming in from the bankruptcy is different from liens on the property.
I understand, but where is the money? The money was supposed to come to Lowell, according to what, uh.
But that didn't have anything to do with the property transaction.
But this, like, this, like, let me explain this to you. Just like you said, doesn't have anything to do with the property transaction, look at the Methodist Church, what we're liable to do for, for ever. That's a grass, that clear everything up there, until something's on it, which will still be a city responsibility. So how would it be, one way or the other, you got those agreements, we're held accountable for whatever. But up there, the bankruptcy money's supposed to go to Lowell, when you did the title search, nothing showed up about that, is that what you're saying?
Correct, the bankruptcy money was not part of the chain title.
We own the property. The city of Lowell owned the property through the Arco money, correct? Or whatever money, whatever fund that they used, what fund that they used to buy it.
Give it for what?
Yes. I understand, but I'm talking about also when it was donated, it has, it comes with all the stuff that goes with it, like the, the, uh, the good things. You know, the chemical plant was reasonably donated to you because it was a dump and it was a hazard. That's why they gave it to you, we were getting property taxes on the property before that. But we're so smart, we take the property, we don't get any property taxes anymore, but we have all the liabilities. Someone goes up there, all these chemicals, things like that, even though you say you got clean bill of health, the state of North Carolina, that doesn't matter. We need an audit to know where the money that we're supposed to be getting from the bankruptcies from it. It says we had, according to dean, we have money owed to us through the bankruptcies. As all in the property. We are the owners of the property. The money follows, you know, to the property owner, which was donated, yes. But where's the money?
Uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, I think the money that he's referring to is money that was left to clean up. Which is sent, spent to clean up that property. Property was due to us, the money that was left was used to clean the property up.
I'm talking about.
I don't think there was any, ever any, we're gonna give you, you know, X dollars, or something like that.
Whatever money goes, the property goes to us, we're the owner. The money you're talking about, you're getting from the state of North Carolina to pay for the cleanup stuff, giving you a grant. You know, that money was terribly wasted and spent, all that money, the time we got elected in January, we spent over eight hundred thousand dollars. That they had to hurry up and get spent before our previous city manager had to get done. All this money that we spent is on our hands, since we got elected, the eight hundred thousand dollars, all the money that we spent on all this stuff. And just like the Methodist property here, it's so, to me, why would you buy a church property?
I, I think you're correct on that money as it relates to the, uh, old chemical plant. There was money that was allowed for cleanup.
Yes.
And we were due to the property, there was money left in the fund to clean the property that we used to clean that property. We were not able to use that for any improvements or anything else. That was done to clear all the boxes and check everything, if, if I'm not correct, please let me know, and I know you don't have a front, uh, title. Uh, but it's not like you had all of a sudden a check coming from the property owner to us that did us the property. Uh, for, you know, whatever dollar bound it is, it didn't exist. The money that was left in the bucket, uh, for reval, revitalization, for cleaning the property, was used for that purpose. And that's where it is, and now all of a sudden we got it, and then we move forward because it's been clicked.
This coun, this council, we, you know, when we got elected in our first meeting in January, from that time on, they spend every dime. Pay eight, nine hundred thousand dollars they pay for this, every month, that way coming to our city manager, coming in wanting more money to pay, pay, pay. I'm talking about the money that's owed to us through the bankruptcy, that we have put monies to us. With the new property owner that it goes to us.
You're assuming that the.
I'm not assuming, I know.
It was done ours, you mean. The bankruptcy's not between Dale and the city of Lowell.
Listen, it's not done, it's, it's, we're supposed to collect money, why would you turn money down?
He's done our court.
It is our money, we own the property. Use your head, that's what, that's what this is about.
It's, it's, it's done before that.
The deal is done what? They gave us the property, yes, but what goes along with the property is what, just like any time, I buy a piece of property, I had bought a property. Whatever, whatever's in the contents, whatever's there, it's with it, if there's money there, we take it, if there's no money there, we don't get it. If there's some kind of restriction in the deed, you go buy it. That's what I'm talking about, the money was appropriated through the state of North Carolina dean, the D Q people. To give us the money was, you know, supposed to been trans, you know, transferred to us. But we have no record, where is the money? Can you research that?
I, I'm not sure I understand this.
The money from the bankruptcy, that went to the people that had the chemical plant, once they transferred the property to us, we're supposed to be getting the money according to the people D Q did the money.
We did not get the property from the people that had the chemical plant.
Who was it the property from?
Lowell Foresight, it was a successor, an owner that had the property.
Then there's bankruptcy, there.
No, it was not the bankruptcy.
That's not the bankruptcy.
No, it was a, an owner that bought that property with the intent of developing it. They were not able to develop it, and they donated it to the city. The money that came in to clean the property is a separate situation, that was during, but there was not like a pot of money that followed that property.
Now here's the whole thing about it now. Nevertheless, if the property went to the people that donated to us, the people that had the, the, uh, money from bankruptcy, it was going to them. And when it's, when it's transferred to us, we should be getting the bankruptcy money, just like they probably were, I don't know. But this is not my record, this is in the record for the property. You checked the deed, you should know all these accomplices, you should know everything about it, I don't. I'm trying to tell you what I know from what's, what's been told by me from people from the, that cleaned the plant up, the, the chemical people, the plant, the state. They said we had money coming, where is it? And why, and let me ask you this, you think they gave us that property because they wanted to help Lowell? That was the dumbest thing that Lowell has ever done in the history of Lowell, was take that, you were getting tax money. Now you got a, a big elephant up there, you gotta maintain and take care of, even though you got two million dollar grant, you wanna put the employees up there in the middle of the chemical plant. And the place looks like crap, with all those insignias on the building, I've asked them to get it painted for, ever since we've been here. But it looks terrible, and it should be cleaned up, everything should be cleaned up for two million dollars. That place ought to be a mackerel, that place should be cleaned. I can't blame you, I can't blame you, that the former city manager was looking after this crap, I do blame them, because this board was in control. This new board, this came on board in January of this year. So we owe it to the people of Lowell, that take what monies we have like that, and it's likely it's like ninety-seven thousand dollars, maybe they've earned that grant money, I don't know how much is left. And nothing has been done up there, no cleanup, no painting that old, the figgy up there, might at least make the place look good, and find out about where our money is from bankruptcy. It should follow with every property owner, no matter who we got it from, they probably receiving money from bankruptcy as well. But they gave it to us because they didn't want it, it was, it was a total loss, why would you take the chemical plant? That's crazy, and spend the state's money, listen, the people in western part of North Carolina don't have nothing hard. You, all the money that's in North Carolina wasted, and hope and pray, you know, all they wanna do, this camp, this campaign was our taxpayer's money. We should never pay grant money, I said that from day one, I don't care what you say, everybody feel about it. Grant money is, is not good, it's money that we have east, each city, each municipality, five hundred and fifty-two municipalities. Should stand on its own two feet and not depend on no one else. We charge taxes, we charge water, shore, and all of them will get all the money from state of North Carolina, sales, taxes, things like that. We can live good, and the reason the employees have been cut down because of Arco money, you know the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. All this fun, all these employees are paying, uh, government money, and once that government money runs out, guess who pays for it? The taxpayers. And what the council did, they should be commended, because if you need help or whatever, the city manager, everybody has to work together. No, that happened before we got, we can do it by ourselves. If you need volunteers, sure, I'd volunteer, if we need to stand on our own two feet and all these deeds, listen, the deed we took from Methodist Church up here. What are the restrictions, do you know? What are we, what are we held to, Mr. Attorney? What are the taxpayers of Lowell held to?
I, I would have to look at the property records, but as I recall, the property was to be used as a city hall and or a location.
What happens in the meantime, we have to take care of, correct? That's the agreement, we take this forever, we take care of that property. Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars is what we paid for that, correct?
You complaining about having to cut grass and trim bushes and.
I'm not, let me finish, I, you have an opportunity to speak.
Come on, Mayor, you passed around on TV, changing lines.
I, I want them to know how we stand. I know you don't care because.
I know, I already told you one time.
You're a council, you're a council, this council cares, I care, I don't care now.
I care.
Whatever we did, that's.
All of you did a point of order.
I agree, I'm, I'm asking a serious question, what are we held to on this property, the Methodist Church property? What are we held to? What's the agreement? You don't know the agreement of the chemical plant, you know the agreement on this one, what are we held to?
Mayor, I think you've been told in the past, if you got questions that you want answers to.
I have questions, I brought this.
You need to bring it to the attorney prior to the meeting, so you can have this information.
He's the one providing this. He did.
I know he provided, but you're asking him questions.
I'm asking questions because we're held liable to, you are his council member, and I as mayor, and I as a citizen, we're all held accountable, every citizen in this town is held accountable.
Point of orders.
That is point of order, I.
Point of order, then we move on.
That's right, I, I know you don't wanna talk about what, sneeze, that should be, this is our money. And what we're doing is wasting taxpayers' money.
There's a point of order, Mayor, on the floor, it's gonna second it, when you can move on.
I have, I have a question to.
Well, you can talk, but you need to move on from this, and we're on to the next.
I need an answer about what we're held to.
You can have a page or a, or a jingle on the next side, you can give staff.
Let me ask you this. Let me ask you anything.
You need to let him finish, if, if they're making a point of order and asking us to move on, you mustn't let him finish that.
Yes, I'm still gonna ask a question, go ahead. Here's my question next, the property that we bought up here for this parking lot, that we bought for seventy-five thousand dollars. Did you do a title search to see if there's any liens and accomplices, anything on that property?
Yes, we would have done that.
You did, was there any liens?
There would, if we closed on the property, there would not have been liens.
So once you closed on it, they removed all liens? No, it doesn't.
No, we would not have closed on it if there were.
We paid seventy-five thousand dollars for that little piece of dirt. It's all of, it's all, our tax, you thought it's not even paid, it's not even ditch parking. But we all, that's, and all these properties we have obtained, the Arco money, our money, taxpayer's money, whatever, should be thought, well thought of, before you ever make the decision. Because now you're held liable to the Methodist property forever, and you don't ever set another payment.
Well, you switched Methodist property to this, I.
I'm, I'm talking about all the.
If you're, if you're, if you're stumping for a campaign, that's what, you're taking council's time.
It's your responsibility to the people, I know you don't understand.
No, I do understand.
Members, you should be responsible, you should be asking questions, and you should narrow it every year. None of this you never.
Don't have, have any reason we're not held on this.
And what did you pay, what, why did you take ten million dollars from state of North Carolina to fix a crappy building up there? And you knew that you could never use it because you can't use it, there's nothing you can use up there, it's not, if you put a chem, if you put our, uh, public works up there. They got to run up down by all those nice homes, with trash flying out of the back of the garbage truck.
This is not the time or place right this second, this point in the debate whether or not a public works facility should go in that property.
When would you debate it?
Close the comments right now, we're done, let's close it.
I'm not for it, I have a question, if you wanna leave, go ahead and leave, you'd be excused, I'm asking a question for the public. And you are the public, and you should be interested as I am.
Oh, I'm interested, I already done my due diligence.
I'm sorry, uh, what's happened in the past, I can't control it, but what happens in the future, I'm a part of it. And this money that we waste, listen, ten million dollars that no one knew we had. All these, all these, all the different plants, right now we're first arriving, we have the other council size first arriving, this is a question different from the plan. How many councils do we have besides first arriving?
We still have Truus.
How much?
How much is in there?
Yes, you can. I've got it, you should know it, mine is obviously relational, all these questions are relevant because it's our money. We can't, we can't continue to operate the city the way we've been operated. Our council was the smartest council in history of Lowell, reduced taxes because they had a way to reduce taxes from forty-nine cents to thirty-five cents. But look what happened to us, the fire packs, we paid the gas and county ten and a half cent. Listen, all this stuff's relevant and crazy, I agree one hundred percent, the previous board didn't understand money, didn't understand the budget. When you pay ten and a half cent for a tax rate.
Much in the case.
Go ahead, ten and a half cent for the taxes, I'll, I'll be excused too, ten and a half cent for tax rate, that we only get back five hun, we're gonna get five hundred thousand. We're paying them over a million dollars a year, and that's our, that's our fighter party. And this, all this because they got upset over a disagreement between the city manager and the fire team.
That's not right, we're just.
No, that's what we need to hear, you're hearing.
Let's kill it all, Mayor, let's kill, let's kill it all, Mayor don't think we need any employees here in city hall. You're gonna run the books, you take it over, you write all checks, you.
You're gonna throw everybody out of this city hall.
See how, see how it's going, all right, go ahead and do it, you've already run everybody else off in here, you've killed everybody.
Tyler's quit, he got run off and he's quit.
You run it, and you could, you know, add a lot of horses up there, wherever the hell you wanna do it.
And your buddy's sitting there, just let you run.
And, uh, we'll see how long it takes, so nobody's gonna say you're out, we're taking it out.
I appreciate your interest, but here's what I like, I would love the hometown to hear this, to see how the money's taken.
They heard it, I tell you what they've done, they forgot from two thousand thirteen to fifteen, what happened. And they did the same mistake again, and that's why we're in this problem right now. And Mr. Smith, I'm excusing myself, I'm gonna.
Things like with Al Green, the city's built the legal minis house, it's gonna take the city.
Big with the volleyball, we're talking business, but town bump. I know you folks back there, I don't understand what I have to understand, that's the bottom line of what it tells of these taxpayers. And that's, this is a tragedy, what's happened here tonight, that we can't get the answers to the public, and none, listen, none of these are working tonight. So the public doesn't even have no, no, no way of knowing.
Yeah, it is.
And that's terrible, it's not working.
It's been recorded, so it will be put on.
Yeah, I hope it is, we can understand where the money's coming. And listen, whenever we, when we spend all this money every year for the budget, that's all we have, we got the budget. We can't get a correct audit from our budget, so we know how we stand, that's wrong, that is terrible for the people, because every citizen. In this town, every employee should know where the money is, and every council member, the mayor, we should know where the money is, and we don't know it. That's all I have, if you wanna turn to me.
Make a motion to adjourn, and I guess, I'll vote himself, well, we're in a corner here.